For allowing us to. I thought it was God speaking for me. Lord, we thank you for allowing us to gather together today. Uh, to do the business of this wonderful city that we all live in. We ask, Lord, that you bless all those who work behind the scenes and hardly ever recognize the staff and the workers of the city. We especially want to thank those that keep us safe. And we ask that you continue to protect them, the firemen and the policemen that do so much for us. We also a- ask a special blessing on this council. That they be given the wisdom that's needed to do the dirty work of this city. To do the tough work and make the hard decisions. Give them wisdom and give them courage. And help us all to remember that what we do is for the better of everyone who lives within our community. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Becky, did you have the public comment list up? All right. Hopefully, everyone who wants to make a public comment this evening signed up. And that's the item, our first item of business this evening is public comments. We do ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. And we may refer items to staff to review and or research for presentation to council later. We may or may not comment on your statements, but uh. Do rest assured we take notes. So the first ni- name on my list is Britton Moore. Now please approach microphone, state your name for the record and then make your comments.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Britton Moore. I live here in Sunnyside. Um, first thing I s- I saw on the agenda was the mayor's appointment for the um Economic Development Board. And I don't know if you have anybody yet from the school district, but if you don't, we can, I can try and help look around for someone because I think you're missing someone for that position. The next thing I'd like to talk about is in consideration of the event coordinator, I don't see it on the agenda tonight. Um, that was something that I'd been kind of uh vacillating about. I'm asking that maybe you postpone that until twenty twenty four. Just really thinking about the police department. Um, I talked about this in the past. Sign-on bonuses for seasoned veteran police officers, I think would be a great idea for Sunnyside. Uh, I don't know if that's been talked about. I don't know if that's been researched, but um we've had a lot of 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 our uh placement retire. So I'd like you to consider something like that. I think that that event coordinated coordinator money would be better spent going towards the police department. Um, second thing I'd like to talk about briefly is Amy Rubio and Mindy Korfman have both been volunteers in this community for some years. Um, volunteering in excess of hundreds and even thousands of hours. Wendy's been with the Rotary and Amy's um been working on joining the Rotary. But uh, both have been doing events for Sunnyside for quite some time. They haven't been treated very well, in my opinion, by city staff. Um, a lot of information is very untrue about what some of you council members might have heard about both of these girls. I trained Amy um, starting out with Cinco de Mayo um, on how to do it. Deb Estrada taught her how to do it. She'd been already doing it for about seven years. I think that the treatment of these two girls had is absolutely horrible. The lies that have been told that you may have heard, I just, I think it's awful. These two girls, um, I would take a bullet for. They are smart, uh fair. And they take their time. And they take away, they sacrifice their family time to do these events. So um, it's more I can speak on privately, but uh, I just wanted to kind of make a blanket statement that I think that the way that they've been treated is is quite poor. And um, I don't want anyone who who's a volunteer in this city to be treated that way, no matter who they are. Um, it's hard enough getting volunteers. But to push them out of events and push them away or or push them out of clubs, quite frankly, is just not fair. So that's all I wanted to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next team on my list is Tom Dolan.
Hi, my name is Tom Dolan. I live here in Sunnyside also. And uh, I just came down to give my favorite deputy mayor a tongue lashing for you know, COVID seems like it's been the restrictions have been lifted for quite some time now. And why doesn't he show up? I miss him. And so since he's gotten approved absence tonight, I guess I don't get to say anything about that. So if anybody needs some time, I have a bunch left there.
All right, thanks, sir. Janet Hicks.
Janet Hicks, Sunnyside, um, just want to bring to the attention of our street people that uh end of Ridgeway Loop. There is a manhole cover and there's a very, there's a sinkhole starting there and it's very rough on cars. So if you don't see it in the middle of the night, it will bounce you.
Speaking from experience?
Yeah, I wasn't driving, but hey. But thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have noted these comments and where we are able to make improvements and changes, we will certainly take those steps. Consent agenda. Consent agenda consists of the following. Minutes, approve the minutes of the June five, two thousand twenty-three workshop meeting, approve minutes of the June twelve, twenty twenty-three regular meeting. Approve the minutes of the June twenty-six, twenty twenty-three regular meeting. Approve minutes of the July ten, twenty twenty-three regular meeting. Payroll vouchers, approve payroll voucher numbers one one nine three two six through one one nine three four zero. And wire transfers as listed for five hundred ninety-seven thousand eight hundred forty-six dollars and fifty-six cents for the period ending July ten, twenty twenty-three. Claim vouchers, approve claim voucher numbers one zero six eight five seven through one zero six nine zero six. And wire transfers as listed for one hundred seventy thousand one hundred fifty-six dollars and fifteen cents for the period ending on July seven, twenty twenty-three. And approve claim voucher numbers one zero six nine zero seven through one zero six nine four seven and whether transfers as listed for six hundred two thousand eighty-three dollars and seven cents for the period ending on July twelve, twenty twenty-three. Does any council member wish to pull any item from the consent agenda for discussion? Hearing none, what is the desire of council on the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
All right, we got motion by Council Beeler, second by Council Ripley to approve the consent agenda as presented debate on this item. Hearing none, all in favor of this item, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I also vote aye, motion passes. Active agenda. Item A, the TIB grant application, APP, Yakima Valley Highway Overly First Street to Sixth Street, consider approving a reservation. Authorizing the city manager to submit an application to secure grant funding through the Washington State Transportation Improvement Board to resurface Yakima Valley Highway between First Street and Sixth Street. Madam City Manager.
And I will turn this over to Raul Sanchez, Assistant Public Works Director for the staff report, who then can turn it over to our engineer if that's appropriate.
Mr. Sanchez.
So I, Stephanie is here to answer all these questions, so.
All right, Stephanie.
Mayor, Members of Council, City Manager, Deputy Public Works Director, thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Stephanie. I'm with Hubert Selon and Associates, also known as HLA. This first resolution is an application uh request that that will be submitted to the Transportation Improvement Board, also known as TIB. TIB is a state funding agency. Their goal is for pavement preservation, roadway reconstruction, and they have a new program this year called Active Transportation Program, which is um geared toward multimodal. Uh, based on the city's six-year tip, two projects stood out. Um, one, this first one is an APP. The acronym stands for arterial pavement preservation. So that's a grind and overlay. Very similar to the award that was received last year by the city uh for grind and overlay and YVH from McDonaldstown to Lincoln. This one is also a grind and overlay for the turn lane, the travel lanes, the bike lanes from first to sixth. The approximate project cost on this is five hundred and eighty thousand dollars. TIB typically funds uh at a ninety to ten ratio. If awarded funding, uh uh, project selections will be made in December and funding will be become available in next year, twenty twenty-four. So this would be a twenty twenty-four project. Currently, there is approximately ninety-two million dollars available statewide for both the APP program and the UAP program, which we're going to talk about next. So at this point, we're looking to submit an application on August eleventh for TIB's consideration of an overlay from first to sixth.
Council, questions?
Mr. Farmer, um, I I do have a question. This is for funding only. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And 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 for as far as the striping is 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 that's going to, is that going to come before us on a different time or is that part of this right here?
It's part of this application. So uh, the what we'd be doing is grinding, so removing about two tenths or two and a half inches of asphalt. Putting the asphalt back on and also doing all the striping and leading up to like stop bars and crosswalks. Those would actually be in thermoplastic instead of paint. But all your lane lines and the crosswalks on either receiving end would be done as part of this project.
I I know I've had lots of complaints about when we switch from four to two lanes and and I think there's confu- still confusion after all these years of how fast you can drive and 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 I I I'm I'm not sure that I I'm I'm for the applying for the funding, but I'm not so sure that I want to stick my name on the striping and and how we were going to have these streets look when we're done.
That's a great question. Um, so at at this moment in time, all we're trying to do is maintain the pavement from getting any worse. Uh, there's several big alligator areas. It's actually even a little bit worse than the section we're doing right now. So we're just trying to stabilize it. Uh, a much larger project should be considered for YVH to do a corridor study. So not only to look at the multiple lanes, the location of the bike lanes, but also all the businesses along there. And you know, there are several that even just kind of back up into YVH and you know, change direction. So a much larger study, maybe a planning effort um should be accomplished. And so I, at this point, all we're trying to do is to stabilize the pavement until that that study is complete and um you know, typically what we do in those type of projects is uh, it's a community effort, council effort, you know, what type of roadway section do you want to see? Do you want to see a boulevard look? Do you want to see planting sidewalks? So that's, that's a little bit down the road.
Okay. Further questions? Okay, I have no questions either. So hearing no questions, what is the desire of council on this item?
Move to approve.
Second.
Is that Mr. Beeler? Okay. Okay, we've got a motion by Council Ripley, second by Council Beeler to approve the resolution authorizing the city manager to submit an application to secure grant funding through Washington State Transportation Improvement Board to resurface Yakima Valley Highway between First Street and Sixth Street. Is there debate on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. I also vote aye, motion carries. All right, item B, I mean, I guess it's going to go to the same people. TIB grant application, UAP, Sixth and Lincoln intersection improvements, consider approving a resolution authorizing the city manager to submit an application to secure grant funding through the Washington State Transportation Improvement Board and to update the intersection at South Sixth Street and Lincoln Avenue. Madam City Manager.
I'll pass it on to Raul and Stephanie.
All right.
Deputy Public Works Director, uh, City Manager, Mayor, Members of Council, thank you again. So the second application that we're looking to submit to the TIB program this year is a reconstruction project. A TIB also calls is a urban arterial program, UAP, fancy fancy words just meaning we're going to take everything out. And so in this case, again, following the six-year tip is uh Sixth and Lincoln. And uh, we were out there on Friday, uh, walking that that project, uh, developing project photos and and things and it it was a little alarming that you have a school, um, very busy intersection, um, ADA ramps are non-compliant along with sidewalks. Um, you know, no pedestrian attenuation on the signal. You just kind of walk across and hoping that there's not a car coming. So this project is intending to replace that uh intersection in its entirety to get rid of the span wire, to put in an actual signal with pedestrian attenuation uh push buttons. And in your packets, there should be an exhibit that roughly shows what we're intending to do. Um, actually put in uniform radiuses uh to try to you know, help uh, I guess, traffic generation and keep in mind Sixth is part of the city's uh truck route. So we do need to maintain some level of uh you know, widened lanes, um, but also uh be recognized con- cognizant that the school is right there. So the exhibit that we're looking to do actually has uh fifteen lanes on the outside lanes and a twelve-foot turn lane. And just by doing that with a thirty-five or five-foot radius, we're actually going to be reducing that walking path a bit, which will really aid us into getting two uh curb ramps per intersection leg. And so instead of walking up to the corner and going, okay, which one am I going to go? There'll be a little bit more directional, um, which should in, will improve safety for the kids. So like the previous application, TIB funds the UAP program at a ninety to ten ratio. The approximate project cost for these improvements is one million two hundred eighty-four thousand four hundred and forty dollars. Uh, the selections will be made in December. Funding would be become available in uh January of twenty twenty-four. With this particular project, we would anticipate design in twenty-four and construction in twenty-five just because of uh the amount of work that's going to be needed in this. And then also uh, for decent bids, we want to really either have a very late bid or a very early bid to try to be uh competitive with everybody else. So uh, with this request, we're asking the city to uh allow the city manager to submit an application.
Okay, questions?
Um, do you know at this point what kind of signals you're going to be putting up here? Right now, um, it's one of the best ones in Sunnyside as far as I'm concerned with the countdown. Are we going to lose that?
Uh, so it would be on a video detection. So I think right now the signal is um, Raul may be able to help me out, but I think it's on timer. And so with the timer, it does allow the steady flow of traffic. But if you happen to hit it at the wrong spot, you're still going to be stopping on a red because there's no detection for you. So it'll be similar to other signals in in Sunnyside. Well, there'll be cameras up on above to actually detect a car coming up to the signal.
And what do you do um on the radius there? You've come uh, pulled it way back from the school. Do you fill that with vegetation with rocks or?
We would uh generally at this location, knowing you're going to have kids everywhere, uh, we would either fill it in with pavement. We, we want something low maintenance for the city. Uh, we generally don't, it's a tight area. We wouldn't want to see anyone get in there um and trying to, you've kind of block off a lane so they can service that area, so.
And the last thing is, I think the truck lanes on Fifth Street behind Safeway not on Sixth Street.
Uh, it, if I'm not mistaken, um, in your packet, uh, you have a vicinity map. And it shows approximate location of that truck route and it does swing back behind Fifth to go north. But I think on the southern side, at at, at least at this intersection, there's not a way for them to get back out to the freeway to sixty-seven unless they go Sixth. Is that not correct?
And I agree with Mr. Beeler on that one because I've always believed that it's not Fifth Street there. It, because Fifth Street comes to an end at Harrison, but I think the truck route moves over to Fourth Street. And that would be the southern route out for the trucks. I think that is the posted truck route.
And they are still posted.
Yeah.
Well, we'll confirm that. Thank you for that comment.
Okay. That's all I have.
Mr. Farmer.
Um. I'm sorry, I I I couldn't hear everything you said. Um, but we're not narrowing the road at all in any spot. In the intersection.
So the intersection um in in your packet, it's uh so going south on this leg particularly, there's um parking that's allowed on both sides. So what we're looking to do is not have parking uh go so close to the intersection as to create a a a an issue, I guess you could say. So um, we'll be doing some very minor uh re- reduction of the lanes. Um, not not, not at all close to what you've experienced in downtown. The lane widths will still be fifteen feet for all your throes and on your outside lanes. Um, your downtown area is fourteen to fifteen feet. Um, currently, your lane widths are on average of about seventeen feet. So it'd be about a two-foot reduction.
And I I just lost it. Um. So we're not going to have parking up close to the intersection. Um, are is there going to be any type of a bow bow or is the sidewalk going to go straight to the corner?
No, um, there's very slight transitions. Uh, actually on your screen, you can kind of see how uh, the transitions are on upwards of two to three feet, um, just to get that thirty-five-foot radius in there and it'll tie right back into curbing. So you're looking at for parking, especially on the south leg or leg four is where parking uh on the street generally occurs. You can see where that first white car is. Um, he'd be offset by roughly five or six feet. So it it's not nearly as dramatic as your downtown area. Um. And and uh, you're particularly all your lane widths, as you can see on leg three, um leg one, the outsides are really just being reduced by two feet.
And here again, it's kind of the same question I asked the last time. We're just approving funding. We're not proving design tonight. Is that correct?
Right.
Correct. Um, you're you're approving the application. However, this will go into the application. Um, it doesn't mean that we can't renegotiate with TIB, but if there was some level of concern, we'd probably want to know um, prior to application submission.
Okay. Further questions, comments? So I guess my concern is similar to that of my colleagues as far as the amount of traffic that goes through there on a daily basis, especially, you know, during school hours when people are dropping off their children or picking them up. Um, I am too also concerned about lane widths and traffic flow and that sort of stuff. We've seemed to have gotten rid of the right turn lanes throughout the city where there used to be and we used to uh use those regularly. I don't know if they were ever official lanes, but the intersection was wide enough to, you could get a double trailer out of there or the rest of us in our cars could make a right turn lane. And that has slowed things down. And there has been some annoyance over that throughout the years. People have gotten tired, especially at um Yakima Valley Highway and and North Sixth Street. Where you can't make that free right turn when the light is red like you used to be able to. And it is frustrating. And I, when I'm in a hurry, I feel the same frustration. So I understand where people are coming from. So I guess I'm concerned along with maybe some of my colleagues about about that type of restriction. So you know, that that is important. And with, again, the number of traffic, amount of traffic that goes through there, I think we need to consider not backing them up any further than absolutely necessary. All right, if there's no other comments or questions, what is the desire of council on this item?
Move to approve.
Well, second.
All right, we've got a motion by Council Beeler, second by Council Hicks to approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to submit an application to secure grant funding through Washington State Transportation Improvement Board to update the intersection at South Sixth Street and Lincoln Avenue. Is there debate on this item? Hearing none, all in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. I also vote aye, motion carries. All right, I have a note on my agenda here. Um, and so it's be a request from City Manager Albot, Albot to get approval to apply for lodging tech funds to plan the twenty twenty-four Sunnyside Cinco de Mayo Festival. So I'll turn this over to the city manager to make her request.
So um, obviously, last year we were given an email two months before the event and took it over. And we now understand the financial uh costs and the cost to the city to do this. And staff has let me know that they had numerous comments from the people that attended and from the vendors uh downtown that they really enjoyed having the city be in charge. So as of today, we have not received any other applications, so I would like permission to apply. And then let LTAC decide if they do get another application, whether they want the city to do it or a private entity.
Council, questions or comments for Ms. Alba?
So are we planning to take over Cinco de Mayo as a city?
Yes, that would be the long-term goal is that we actually do the Cinco de Mayo event.
I uh, I'm of the opinion that the city should not be involved in this type of an activity. Uh, I I I don't know if there's anybody that's got, would, will step up and 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 take the uh and and take the the burden on and and it, and I appreciate what the city did this year. Uh, it was uh, I think it went above and beyond, but I I I still think that it needs to be a volunteer thing. Uh. I I I I'm I'm hesitant, I'm hesitant in in having the city do it again. That's, it just goes right down to that.
And if I could respond to that, Mr. Farmer. Um, so whether the city is uh involved or not, the city still has to be involved. Um, our police and our street department um are integral to that event. Um, the only thing that we really did take over was the, the putting on the parade and then um having the vendors register. So otherwise, it was all volunteers.
Further questions or comments?
Did you have a really good turnout for volunteers to help or were they all paid and city employees?
We had a mixture of volunteers and paid city employees. There was, and that was, that's typical. That wasn't anything new.
We had people from the city volunteering.
Yes, we did have some from the city volunteering. We had some that were paid. But they would have been anyway because they're a part of the department that puts it on. Whether the city is taking money for the vendors or not.
Guess when I said city, I mean the people in the community, did they volunteer?
Yes.
As the volunteer.
Yes, we did have people that volunteered.
Have have we reached out to different groups uh to see if anybody would like to take this on other than, other than the city?
So we we put out the RFP for LTAC and that it's published in the newspaper. And then it's also sent to anyone that's ever applied before. So they they have been reached out to. And I'll I'll tell you just, just so you kind of know, um, in other cities, it is common for a city to put on their events. We're we're just an anomaly here. And and usually if there's a chamber, the chamber kind of takes the lead as well, but since we don't have a chamber, it kind of puts us at a disadvantage.
Further questions?
Can I ask how much you're going to ask LTAC for?
Thirty thousand dollars, just like it has been in the past.
And then what's that going to go to pay?
Um, we actually have an itemized um budget that we can provide to you that shows what we had in proceeds this year. The event is actually quite lucrative and profitable. It's not an event that you don't do for free.
So then my question is the profits, where do they go?
So.
He's not allowed to make a profit.
So those would actually go back into the fund um to, I I mean, we could use it for other purposes.
I I would like to see a budget before I, before I'd want to vote on this. I'd like to see where, how much money we're planning on spending and where it's going.
Yeah, Jameson has that. We can provide that. Um, the 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 problem approaching is that the deadline to apply is Wednesday. So um, I can actually pull it up from email and go print some if you'd like.
Council, would you like to have the budget in your hand a minute before we look at it?
I would.
Okay, we could have someone.
Yep.
Print that.
Um, Ms. Alba, would you mind if I?
Yes, please, Jameson, go ahead and speak.
Um, I I do want to address um one of the issues with providing events that has come about. Um, allowing other um entities to make a profit off of city assets. Um, it was brought up that it could be considered a gifting of public funds to allow a third-party entity to to allow a third-party entity to rent out space to um to other people and make a profit off of that. And so I'm specifically talking about the vendor booths um that I I am in the process right now of researching whether or not there's validity to that to somebody saying that, but basically based on the Washington State Constitution, no one is allowed to, um we're not, the city is not allowed to lend our credit to anyone else for anything, and that's one of those things that has kind of, it's, you know, for me, it's a gray area and I don't know the answer for sure, but I just wanted to keep that in mind for you guys. So in the past, what we've done is provided for all events, really, that have vendor space on city property. They fill out their application. The city does our thing with closing the streets off. And then whoever's running that event gets to decide how much they're gonna charge for those spaces. So that's basically renting city assets, city space in town, and then that person who's providing the event is profiting off of that. So there may be a a concern there that I'm in the middle of researching. Just wanted to bring that up.
Okay, well, that'd be a good idea to know that because that could open up a can of worms on not just this event, but in a lot of different areas. So further questions or comments?
If if we were to apply this year, um that doesn't set us into getting or doing um Cinco de Mayo every year, does it?
Now, we would have to apply every year if we wanted to. That that would, it would be in every year, we'd have to make the decision and council has to authorize us to actually apply.
And is the thirty thousand gonna go to the La Familia?
No.
It did. Plus thirty-eight thousand.
Excuse me, no comments during the meeting?
Where'd that come from?
Yes.
Okay. Because I'd have to ask the uh the audience members to please restrain yourselves for making comments during this portion of the meeting. We do have a public comment section at the beginning of the meeting. And you're welcome to make your comments at that time. Or you could talk to us individually after the meeting or outside the meeting.
I I can state for the record as the finance, the person in charge of finance for the city, that the city made no payments to any organization called La Familia in regards to the Cinco de Mayo event.
As we look at this budget, do questions come to mind? Are you saying that the total cash revenue? What what's our total earnings here? I don't know, revenue connected to ninety-nine hundred or the seventy thousand?
Um let me go over this. Sorry, this is um, this was an, this is an unaudited um financial overview that I prepared for the LTAC committee. Um just, and this is not official because there have been other, um I believe, other invoices that have come in, not sig- not hugely significant, but there are other expenses. So when you look at this sheet, um what you're looking at is the revenues in the top left corner. Um and then there's a box in the top right corner. Um because in the past, we don't know how much the um contractor that was awarded this ha- charged for the vendor spaces, we went off of the receipts that we had been able to collect from individuals in the past to try to figure out kind of what people were used to paying for that. So we priced those out at three hundred or six hundred dollars based on the location of the of the booth or the the spot that they were renting. So that total at the bottom um uh or in the middle sort of is that forty-seven thousand dollars. That's the amount of revenue based on the number of spaces at the price that we assessed would have come in to fill those vendor booths. For fund year twenty twenty-three, um we we allowed vendors that had paid for booths in twenty twenty-two to have those spaces without paying additionally since the twenty twenty-two event was canceled. So at the bottom, you'll see we collected nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars in revenue because we comped thirty-seven thousand dollars in revenue to the people that had previously paid for last year's event. So that total amount of revenue could have been forty-seven thousand, but we only actually collected nine thousand um nine hundred and seventy-five for twenty twenty-three. So the total cash revenues we actually did get included that nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-five in in revenue from the booths, the carnival revenue at almost thirty thousand, the LTAC funds, and then a small amount of car show revenue um for adding that car show. And then on the expenditure portion, we did include overtime wages in this consider in consideration of this, simply because since the city put it on, we wanted to make sure we captured all of the expenses. This is not to say that the city hasn't spent money on overtime in past years or that this is all an additional amount, but simply that it is an expense that the city assumed as part of this event, we would be paying that maybe not as much because of the last-minute nature of us organizing this, of having to get a few more people involved and authorizing overtime for more people. But we have spent overtime on this event in the past as well. So then the itemized items are basically the list of the different types of things we spent money on for the entire um event. And that total expenses came to eighty-eight thousand. So if you take that overtime out, it was about sixty thousand. So for the city's total cash flow for this year, we did we we were basically spent more than we received by seventeen thousand dollars on this unaudited version. Like I said, there are, I think, a couple other invoices. Um but if you take into the consideration the city's comped vendor booths amount, um the the event would have been profitable as it was put on. And then when the sun, when the city takes in revenue like this, if we were to put it into a special revenue fund, which we have a special revenue fund set up already for tourism, and it's where the LTAC money goes into for hotel multi-tax. Um it, that fund is not restricted to only hotel multi-tax money. It's restricted to use for tourism. So any other money that we brought in from any event that would increase tourism in the city of Sunnyside, we could put back into that fund so that it is guaranteed to only be used for continued tourism. Um the city's not required to do that. We could also put that money into the general fund and, you know, give it to police, fire, whatever. Um that would be at the option of the council.
And I would note in years past, the overtime wages was only tracked by the police department in charge to Cinco de Mayo. None of the streets department or any other city employees that were paid overtime was tracked. So we decided this year, we would track all of the hours in one, so we would know the true, the true cost to the city for this event.
Well, I know that I've been on LTAC before both sides um. There's a time limit to apply for LTAC funds for the next year. Um I too would like to see volunteers run the whole Cinco de Mayo. But it's such a big event, I don't want to see it go away. Um so you kind of, I'm kind of in a catch twenty-two. Um it is easier to fund somebody like we did last year, and then the city took over and then the funds just reverted over to there. Um but if nobody applies for the LTAC, that money's lost. And Cinco de Mayo might be lost, and that is a good event for the city and for the people that live here in the city and abroad. So I'm I'm thinking we go ahead and have the city manager apply. So at least those funds can be set aside for Cinco de Mayo. Um I think it's important to keep the funds going for Cinco de Mayo at this point. And hopefully somebody will step up and do a really good job and keep this wonderful thing we have in this city going.
Thank you, sir. Other comments or questions?
I'm kind of in the same boat. That's it is a big event here. Wouldn't like to see it lost, but then I'm also in the boat that I don't think the city should be running on.
And I do wish we had more notice on this so that we can check things out.
Mr. Farmer?
Maybe I don't understand the LTAC money.
Correctly.
Is is it use it or lose it?
It is not.
That's okay. So a- and 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 how far in advance do we have to approve it in order for it to be used?
So the funding cycle is, the deadline is Wednesday for twenty twenty-four uh applications or or things.
Is it is that state rules or can can we convene the LTAC committee on on a later time a- a- and and approve it then?
It can be.
I believe so, yes.
We can, LTAC funds we receive throughout the year. Um the city, there aren't regulations on when we have to receive applications or this or provide funding to approved organizations. But the the way that the city has has traditionally always done this has an RFP process that includes this event that has a deadline for um organizations to apply for the LTAC funds. LTAC is um the lodging tax advisory money is supposed to be used for events or or things happening in the city that bring people from far, like fifty miles or more away, to come into town to stay overnight. Um it helps our our hotels and our, you know, campgrounds and all that stuff. And it brings people into town to do business. So the restriction on those funds is simply that that their use needs to um needs to result in people coming into the city of Sunnyside or, you know, this area and and staying overnight. Um beyond that, there's not any other real restrictions, so we don't have to use it. We could bank it for years and years and and let it build up. We can use it, we could decide that we want to use it for specific types of things or not. Um but it is not, it is also not a requirement that we have to use LTAC for Cinco de Mayo. So if somebody decided they didn't, if no one applied for Cinco de Mayo, the city can still put on Cinco de Mayo. Just like we always have, and it would happen just like it did this year. Only instead of transferring LTAC money from the specific tourism fund, all of that would happen with the general fund money. Does that make sense? Did I lose anybody?
It does, but I think to more to Mr. Farmer's question, um it, if if somebody doesn't apply by the deadline, LTAC committee can convene again and consider that application. The disadvantage then is that some of that money would have already been awarded and there may not be the amount that they request. So if they ask for thirty thousand dollars and then money's been awarded for other events, um and the application has not yet been received, then the money may be restricted. They may have less available. Um the city's LTAC committee has decided, and I think part of its consideration of busy schedules and the difficulty of getting everybody together um to get all the RFPs in at one time, and then they can meet and have those discussions at one time or over a couple of meetings and make their decisions when they can manage to get everyone together, because it is a challenge. These are busy people. And to get everyone there at the same time has has been has proven to be quite difficult from ti- from time to time. So they've agreed that once they get these on the twenty-sixth, then they will have, they have a special meeting set up for early August, where they will be reviewing the applications and they'll make their decisions at a second meeting in August, so.
Well, I I would like, I would like to see it postponed where we have a better chance to look at what we're what we're approving tonight and look for other options. Uh so I I don't, I appreciate the city's work on this. Uh I just happen to have a different opinion. And and uh I I would uh I I would, I would like to just table it uh to a future meeting.
What is feeling a rest counsel on this one?
I agree with Mike.
So what we're looking for here is a consensus. We're not looking for emotion, so. I've got two would like
I think we should table it.
Oh, we've got three of the five of us who would like to table it. Mr. Hicks, what are you thinking? All right, let's table it for a later meeting so we can get more information. Um there's a little bit of risk there. And I know staff members would like to get started on the uh on the on the planning for all of this, but um understand that we want to understand, understand this budget just a little bit more and see exactly where the LTAC funds are going to be spent, so. Moving on, item number four, item from council members, mayor's appointments for boards and commissions. I do have some vacancies on boards and commissions before me. We have one vacancy open for the Community and Economic Development Committee. And we did receive a suggestion this evening that we look at a person representing the school district. And I don't disagree with that. In fact, I don't believe you're the first person to bring that up, so um we can definitely look. Have we, Ms. Rentry, received any applications for this position? We have not. So let's see if we can encourage somebody from the school district to get involved in this. I think that would be a valuable contribution. We also have one vacancy by a council member to the finance subcommittee. That was the position held by Ms. Hart. We recall Ms. Hart has stepped down because she moved out of her district. Um do we have a council member who wishes to volunteer to serve on the finance subcommittee? Were you waiting for yourself there, Mr.?
We're already on it.
You're all both already on it, so that uh that would be myself, Mr. Farmer, or Ms. Ripley?
I'll do it.
Ms. Ripley has volunteered. Thank you so much. All right. Next item, council request that, oh, I did one thing about um boards and commissions. We have a list here and we all received it via email email of the number of people whose terms has come up for renewal. They can either be renewed in their position or can be replaced. Um sometimes people choose not to be renewed. And there's a fairly significant group we are needing to uh to meet and take a look at that. And I believe that's Mr. Farmer, myself, and the deputy mayor. So we will go to work on that, but also we need to get some names if these people don't wish to continue. So we'll get that information out to the public as well as soon as possible. Counsel request status report, Madam City Manager.
I don't have a copy of it in front of me. We're waiting.
We could expand that a little bit, maybe help.
See it. And so uh Mr. Fisher is uh excused today, so I'm not sure if Mr. Sanchez has any update on the water tower. No, okay. And noise ordinance, no updates, Mr. Martin? Uh code enforcement?
Um I, we have a, I kind of mentioned this before, but we have a, an online portal now. And that's kind of where our code enforcement is being um directed to, so we've we've been um communicating that with the general public.
I got a question. Um as far as the noise ordinance goes, did we receive a lot of or very few complaints about Fourth of July fireworks being lit off?
This, because I came in last year, I came in right before Fourth of July, and I remember hearing a lot more about it than I did this year. Um we, yeah, I um our code enforcement officers mentioned this. The co- the complaints on the phones, we had signi- significantly less of. Um so I don't know if there was a louder message delivered last year by council or what happened. But there was, yeah, the overall, I think the number of complaints were down.
I mean, I have noticed that they're still being lit off occasionally. There's, there's some neighbors of mine that every once in a while in the evening, just all of a sudden decide to cut loose and
One of the comments I get, it doesn't do any good. So why do it? Why report it if it doesn't do any good?
I've heard that comment too. And a lot of people don't call it in because
And it may be a factor. We don't have enough officers available to patrol the streets as heavy as we'd like to. Um this, it seems as is as fast as we hire new officers, uh officers retire. So that that has, I'm sure, been a frustration for our police department, but we certainly would like to keep a lid on these noise violations if if that's possible.
Yeah, so the the big, big item with uh fireworks is you have to see the per- basically see the person lighting the fuse. And if we don't have that, it's it's kind of lost, so it's not gonna really go anywhere, which is unfortunate. But that's basically, we have to see them lighting the fuse and have somebody witnessing, witness them doing that.
Well, let's see if we can find a way to work around that. Carry on, I'm sorry.
So um that's all we have from the council's request status. So um that's all we have on the council's request status report.
All right, if there's any items that council members would like added to the council status report, you may add them now. Or if you think of them later, you may uh talk to the city manager or myself. In order to get those added. Other reports, announcements, and or questions by council, and we do it the way I normally do. I'm gonna start at the far end of the table, Mr. Beeler.
I have no questions or comments at this time.
Okay, Mr. Hicks.
I have a question on our Tina Knox Park.
Okay.
The status of that.
Tina North Park, that is a question that has appeared. Um do we have any information on the Tina North Park? Is it available for rent for games? Is it um is it usable?
Yes.
Okay.
I I haven't heard anything. I'm sorry, I don't follow Facebook.
Can you elaborate, Mr. Hicks, or?
I just heard talk of people complaining about not being able to get it or use it or.
And they've attempted to rent the facility and not? Okay.
Just general comment.
Yeah, unless it's uh. Out of out of service, there's, I mean, there's nothing to be out of service at that at that park, really. There's. It we did talk at the last meeting, uh Mr. Fisher is trying to figure out how to get some bathrooms there. That's one of the bigger issues. Um but otherwise, I. I believe it's just available if someone wants to call the community center and run it.
Okay.
Um I'm on here. Am I allowed to speak?
I'm sorry, no, ma'am. We are not allowed to speak unless you're during the public comment period. You may speak to us individually outside of the meeting, though. All right, Mr. I'm sorry, Ms. Ripley.
Um can we get a report on the uh code enforcement? Guys, you know, on on. What's been going on there?
Hmm um would you like to like a brief report now, or is there? Um we 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 switched our system, so we we are we're logging things a little bit differently right now, so we're waiting for some data to come in before I I give the next report on this. But I can I can kind of deliver you the report that we did before, before we had the system.
Okay.
Yeah. So e- either way.
Um. A report now and then um can we get like a monthly report on on?
Yeah, yeah.
How they're doing?
Yeah, we can. We can do that, yes. Yeah, so we're we're yeah, we're just waiting. I think we, because we went live pretty recently, we're just kind of waiting for that data to to populate in this.
Okay.
Before we deliver something. Hmm but yeah, I'll 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 be happy to bring that to you.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Farmer.
Uh I had the same. Question about the reports of code enforcement and and police. And fire.
Okay, um if I could uh momentarily, uh the person that was wishing to speak is actually a staff member with Parks and Recreation, Mary, our. Parks uh our recreation supervisor. If it's okay with council, I would like to allow her to address Mr. Hicks's question.
Council, is that okay?
It's fine.
All right.
Mary, you have the floor.
Uh thank you. So I was just uh gonna talk about Tina Knoth. Um since I've taken over Parks and Rec, I have not denied any rentals to anybody, even regarding Tina Knoth. Um I had a gentleman approach me for adult football, and he was allowed to rent it. Um now, if he used it, that I don't know. Um but he did have and pay for the services to be used. And I am working on fall soccer to be played there as well for this September and October.
Okay, thank you. That does help, because there's there's rumors out there that we're not allowing people to use that park, and so.
Yes, and I've I've heard that as well, but since I have been there, um I have not denied anybody any usage at any of my at the parks.
Okay, thank you. Is that all?
Um yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Farmer, you had some more comments?
I I do, um way back in the prehistoric ages when I first came on council. We allowed citizen input. During discussions. What were on the agenda. Uh the things come up in our discussions that. Citizens may want clarification, may have may have some uh updated knowledge that might help us. There are other councils in the valley that allow that. I would like. Our council to consider this over the next week or two. Um uh to see if it's something that we want to reinstitute and allow public comment. During our discussions on agenda items.
Well, thank you, Mr. Farmer. I do know that as long as I've been on council, it hasn't been allowed. Um I'm not necessarily adamantly opposed to it, um but it is something that council does need to discuss. Um and that may be a good item for a workshop meeting, and we can just speak freely amongst ourselves and 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 see. I do know that the community members do have a lot to offer, and they also have a slightly different perspective than we do, and then also the fact that. On occasion, they don't find us to talk to us after the meeting or before the meeting, and so this isn't always going to be a negative thing. But there is an element of keeping order to these discussions as well that we have to consider, so. Yeah, I think it's a good item to put on a agenda sometime in the future. We can talk about the pros and cons of that. And just, I I believe that Deputy Mayor would have an awful lot to contribute to that. He has a fair amount of knowledge of uh. State codes and rules and that sort of stuff, and it might give us some some different insight into that from what we've had, but um definitely a. A a good topic for the discussion. Okay, and I don't have anything to bring up this evening. Also, I do, I guess I do, um so uh you may have noticed that we do have a vacancy on council. Uh Councilor Hart had to resign as a result of moving out of her district. We do have to fill that position for the rest of this year. Um we've talked about it amongst ourselves and council and staff and feel that. Filling that vacancy with one of the candidates running for the office would show favoritism, and that would not be fair or right. So we're not going to do that. Had we only had one candidate running and it was going to be an obvious win for that candidate, that's a different story. But since we have more than one candidate for that seat, we feel that it would not be a great idea. If there is a member of the community who lives in that district, and that's district number three. Position three. Yeah, so you can look that up if you'd be willing to step in for the rest of the year and serve on council. You can get an application online or at City Hall. And you can help us set the budget for next year. And serve on some committees, so that might be uh something interesting for someone and. Who knows, it may whet your appetite to run for council later. All right, upcoming council meetings, Madam City Manager.
I'll turn this over to Clerk Grant, yeah.
On the August seventh workshop, there's discussion items. The first is SMC two point O two. Schedule of fees and charges. The next is second quarter financial report, including full report on Cinco de Mayo and the tourism fund. The next is um the community products coordinator. The next one is twenty twenty four budget calendar and schedule a finance upcoming meeting with Jamie Horner. And then August fourteenth, classification and compensation schedule for CBAs and any positions, also budget amendment. And um SMC two point two schedule the fees and charges. And August twenty eighth, we have um the LTAC funding recommendations, that is if um LTAC. Was ready to send those recommendations to you, if not, we would schedule it for a September meeting.
Okay, if anybody's got items to add to any of these agendas, please submit them to. City manager or the clerk as soon as possible to get those on the agenda. And our last item on the agenda is items from department heads, and Madam City Manager.
Okay, I'm going to go first because I have an item that came through that I need to discuss with council and um. Get some direction from you, so I received a. I'll just read it. Cannabis license renewal application in your jurisdiction, in your jurisdiction, your objection opportunity. Enclosed, please find a list of marijuana license premises in your jurisdiction, whose cannabis license will expire in about ninety days. This is your opportunity to object to this license renewal request as authorized by RCW sixty nine point five zero point three three one. Parenthesis seven, and so the attached is for. Stonies LLC, business name is Dave's Place, ten Maple Grove Road. And it says marijuana retailer. Expiration date of twelve thirty one, twenty twenty three. Would you like me to write a letter of object objecting to this license renewal?
Council comments.
I I think they need to run their own city. We don't need to help them. I think we need to stay out of it.
But this is for the city of Sunnyside.
We don't have a marijuana store in Sunnyside.
But we do have a license. We have an individual who has received a license, and that would be uh.
I would I would say no.
Mr. Hicks?
I said, we've put it out to the citizens three times. Each time they said no, so I would say. No, let it expire.
Okay.
Now, this is, this is basically, let me make sure everyone understands. This is the. It's going to expire. This is our opportunity to object to renewal request.
Yes, I would object to.
When was it ever added request?
It it was added by the state. This is issued by the state, not by the city. So the city can issue through the Washington, uh sorry, the state can issue a license through the Washington State Liquor and Cannabis Board.
You just can't sell it.
We have it where it's not allowed, but. We now have the opportunity to object to the renewal of this license. Do you want me to write a letter saying we object?
Yes, yes.
Okay, Ms. Ripley, you haven't commented yet?
I say no.
It seems as if you got a consensus from from council, um. You know, he, this individual obtained his his cannabis license before the city granted permission to sell. Um marijuana in the city, which we, of course, never did, so um I think at this point, and I think the business is doing something else now, correct? That that location is a different business.
A meat shop at this point in time.
Correct. Which is, so. I would say yes, let's let's object to that, I guess.
Hey, Mr. Farmer, I haven't heard from you.
Say no.
Don't write a letter?
Write the letter and say.
Okay, so you say yes.
Okay.
So I will be writing, preparing a letter. Um I will make sure that it goes to city council through email so that you know. What I've said, and then if there's any edits, I'll have a timeframe on when you can let me know. I need to edit that. Um I want to. Make a public comment, and this is all I'm going to comment, um. The city placed uh Mr. Sullivan under investigation for alleged policy violations, but reached a voluntary settlement with Sullivan. Before taking any final action following conclusion of the investigation, and the city is not able to discuss the matter any further. So I wanted to make sure council had heard that, and that's really all I'm going to say.
Okay, we all understood that. City manager is not able to make any further comments on that item, and really, we can't either.
And then I want to remind everybody about the Adopt a Planter Program. We have had ten people sign up. Um I haven't seen any action on any planters yet, but I'm sure they will be getting that done shortly. And then uh lastly, I have a um ribbon cutting ceremony, some ceremony that we've been invited to. By um Yakima Valley Local Crime Lab. It is going to be August third. And there's a eleven AM check-in and social time. Eleven thirty ribbon cutting and noon photos and light refreshments. And because the lab is very small, we are being asked to schedule crime lab tours. So if any of you would like to go, I'd like to get us um RSVP'd as soon as possible. So that's August third, starting at eleven AM.
Right, council members, any of you feel like you would like to go to that? Mr. Hicks, Ms. Ripley?
Yes.
Mr. Beeler?
Okay.
I would like to go, however, I will be out of town, so.
And we um arrange some kind of transportation. I'm not sure what. Maybe we'll ask Rob if we can borrow the the jail bus.
Mr. Hicks?
I'll be driving myself because I have to go immediately to work after that.
Okay. All right, and so with that, I will turn this over to Chief Laman, and then I will just let staff go along the line down here.
First, I apologize, Mr. Farmer. I don't have stats for you tonight. I know you just asked for those, and I always have them, but. Um our county analyst that pulled those for me was off today, and I was working on some National Night Out stuff, and then I had a meeting. Uh with Mr. Bruce up at the prosecutor's office this afternoon, so I can get a chance to pull those. Um National Night Out is coming up. Uh I guess first, there's going to be three block parties. One will be at upon the at Kiwanis Park. One will be at Valley Hills across from the high school, and one will be at Central Park. Um and then on Friday night, there will be a community-wide uh national night out at uh South Hill Park. So uh I just, since we've been here, approved the press release from uh our PIO that's been handling those and should be uh going out. Tonight or tomorrow, so look forward to seeing you all at that. Thank you.
Um thank you, council. I wanted to apologize. I was out on emergency medical leave for two weeks. I had a surgery, so some of my council items did get pushed back. And I thank you for your patience on that. That being said, um because we talked about Cinco de Mayo and this budget. I'm wondering if you would still like me to provide another updated report at the upcoming workshop? Or if you would like me to strike that item from the workshop?
What's your desire, council?
I'd like to see the full report.
Read again, okay.
Yeah, I I would agree. I think council would like to see the full report on that.
Okay, um and then additionally, since we filled the finance subcommittee now, um I'm wondering if we can schedule a finance subcommittee meeting. Um sometime before the workshop to go over the financials, um before I present them to the full council. So that would need to be scheduled before the third, I think.
Those members on that committee can work together and find a mutually agreeable date.
Okay, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Ms. Ray, are you staff today?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Uh on behalf of Mr. Fisher, we'll say nothing to report at this time.
I have a a few things here. So um the first thing is that uh there's been two demolition orders that the city received. Wants to move forward with the demolition orders for two properties that have been uh chronic nuisance and kind of a a blight for a while. So we will be proceeding with that starting tomorrow. We have some some people who do scrap that will be coming in to remove some scrap from these properties. Um the first one. There's the address at this point in time, yeah. So the the first, the first one is at six nineteen South Ninth Street, um which is right along the memorial. It's on the corner, corner property right there, and then the other one is thirteen seventeen Harrison Avenue. It's uh an abandoned house. Um on the south side of the street, so it's kind of mid-block south side of the street that. So those are the, those are the two properties that we'll be pursuing, um and we'll be working with some some contractors to to abate these properties. Um we have a few more that we're going to probably be looking at at sometime this year. Um it's been an interesting year for cleanup of properties. A lot of them have cleaned themselves up, or a lot of people have. Um taken action on their own, a little little bit of persuasion, but we've actually had quite a few of them this year. Um that have that have mitigated themselves, but these these ones have been outstanding for a long time, from what I understand, the one at sixteen nineteen. Been out there for about twenty years, kind of in and out of the courts, causing a lot of issues, so um we're we're going to move forward with that pretty soon here. Um number two is the car wash. There was a, there's been a car wash that's. That's been. Kind of an interesting um code enforcement issue. So they started on the north side of YVH on the vacant lot. Um I believe that Mr. Mr. Esteban Ruiz owns owns the lot at this point in time. Um we approached them. We did an enforcement action against them. They filed their five oh one C three paperwork, they're charitable organization, and they got their business license. So they did all the right steps, and then they moved to the south side on the street a block down. We, this is a larger conversation. They they have since moved, they've moved out to out of the Sunnyside city limits, so we've we've talked to them, and we've kind of just. Um expressed our concerns with with the biz overall, um but this is something, we don't really touch on this kind of action. They went through the right steps to get the right business license, but I think we need to probably have some sort of meeting at a. At a workshop later on in the near future to kind of discuss, to to kind of discuss. This action and where we would like to see this in the future, because it can get into some gray area that.
So a question on that, when this was a car wash, I was operating kind of in the style of a fundraiser, church, school, group type thing that opens in a parking lot. And they were just going day after day after day, correct?
Right, and we, and that's that's what we explained to them, that we can't, if this is truly a charitable organization fundraiser, there's. There's times you do this and don't do that, but um we we need to address our. there's times you do this and don't do that, but um, we, we need to address our, our city municipal code. Um, so we need to kind of tie some things together, I think, moving forward as we address these things. So that's, that's kind of what I, what I would like to bring up to council at a future workshop, to kind of make sure that we fill in all the gaps and all the, all the things that we need to, to kind of make sure this, we're clear in the future if this ever comes through us again. Um, and then the last thing is um, the Community Economic Development Commission, they are done with they're, they're done putting together their revolving loan fund packet, so I will bring that to the next um, council meeting and have a, a presentation on that, so it should be a pretty cool, pretty cool project.
Nice.
I have no report at this time, some rest, questions?
Questions for Mr. Riley? Looks like you're off the hook again.
Um, from the fire department, just uh, kind of our call around this point, since the last council meeting, we've ran a hundred and ninety one uh, emergency calls for service, which brings our year-to-date total of uh, two thousand four hundred and seventy-two uh, emergency responses wow, within our community. Um, as we've discussed in some council meetings before, we've been really trying to uh, broaden our training portfolio and, and trying to um, create train opportunities for our staff, but also make sure that we're meeting all the intents and purposes of the Washington administrative code and other uh, basic training um, thresholds we need to meet, and so with that, our year-to-date train hours department-wide is at the uh, one thousand five hundred and sixty-six train hours for our staff, which is uh, is very admirable, so very proud of them for that, so um, Mr. Farmer, also if you, there's anything that report-wise you'd like from the fire department, please don't hesitate to reach out. I can get some.
Just calls for service and, and, and what we're, and what we're doing.
Absolutely, absolutely. We are participating in the National Light Out with law enforcement. We're excited about that and um, we'll be at the large event and I'll be attempting to be at the um, it's kind of hard to be three places at once, but we're uh, gonna try and make it work on the, the night of the first, so uh, as a department, we're looking forward to that. That's all I have.
So in our office, we'll be receiving the um, lodging tax fund proposals that people submit. It's due on Wednesday at four PM this Wednesday, um, and then I'll be sending those out to the members of LTAC so that they can review, um, meaning it's will be scheduled on August second for them to review. Other than that, uh, Madi's been super helpful in um, looking at our records and seeing what needs to go, what stays. So we're getting things cleaned up downstairs and lots of, lots of things going on. Um, we've had a lot of records requests, I'm thankful that Ben has been so helpful and super quick at responding at all of our complicated questions that I feel are complicated, so thank you, Ben. Um, but yeah, that's it.
All right, thank you, everyone. So one item before we adjourn, um, I will not be around on August seven for the workshop meeting, so uh, without objection, I will excuse myself from that meeting and Deputy Mayor knows about that, so he will be chairing the meeting that evening, so. All right, no other business to come before this body and without objection, we are adjourned at seven forty-four. Thank you, everybody, and good.